Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this hearing of the Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee and Rules and Reference Committee to order. Last year, I shared a story in The Dispatch about meeting with students at Beechcroft High School. We were chatting, and they asked why folks can profit by the selling of medical marijuana, but their friends in Northland still lose their jobs if they're caught with weed on them. In Columbus, medical dispensaries have sold almost $3 million of marijuana with the state's blessing. I think the state took a step in the right direction by legalizing medical marijuana, but what they failed to do was to address the two-track legal system. On one track, folks in a certain part of town can have marijuana on them and face no legal consequences, while in other parts of town, places like Southwood or the Near East Side, folks who look like me face criminal charges, hefty fines, and barriers to employment for the same behavior. This duality should not exist. That's why Columbus City Council has been investigating how to keep folks out of handcuffs and get them back into jobs. A few months ago, we held a hearing on the problem itself. We heard stories and statistics on how marijuana arrests disproportionately burden young black residents and how these types of charges can help folks from gainful employment. After dozens of conversations, months of research, and a robust public conversation, we're considering two key items at tonight's hearing. First, lowering penalties for the possession of paraphernalia and small amounts of marijuana. And secondly, increasing funding for legal aid attorneys to help seal records for minor convictions and help folks get back to work. We'll hear from council's research staff on the proposed legislation before council, and then from a legal aid representative regarding their current record sealing services and what they hope to accomplish with the proposed funding. Before we get started, I'd like to thank Mayor Ginther, City Attorney Zach Klein and his team, Solicitor General Chief Quinlan, and many more for their willingness to engage in this conversation. Certainly would like to thank all of my colleagues who have weighed in and made this legislation better, and certainly want to thank everyone here tonight who took time out of their busy schedule to be a part of this conversation. Also would like to thank all the folks who have weighed in online and in various forms. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my co-chair of tonight's hearing, Chair Faever.
Thank you, President Harden. I first want to thank everyone here in attendance this evening as we continue this conversation about marijuana reform in Columbus. We have been very intentional the past several weeks about engaging the entire community in our goals with this pending legislation. The feedback from the faith community, workforce, development agencies, young professionals, nonprofits, and other community stakeholders has been critical to our process, and we are appreciative of all the feedback we have received thus far. In addition to community engagement, we have been paying close attention to Senate Bill Three and what the state legislature is proposing in relation to criminal justice reform and drug sentencing. All of these initiatives impact what we are able to do here at the city, and we are working closely with the city attorney's office and others to ensure we are doing the right thing. When people are arrested for possessing small amounts of marijuana, they are likely to face collateral consequences that can affect their eligibility for public housing, student financial aid, employment opportunities, child custody determinations, and immigration status. With the onset of legalized marijuana and potentially other nonviolent offenses in the state of Ohio, it is important for our city to continue to have conversations about enforcement and its impact on public safety, the resource drain to our officers and prosecutors, and despaired enforcement. I want to be clear, this is not a hearing that is promoting drug use or drug trafficking or discouraging the enforcement of the law. Our goal is to ease the implications that possessing small amounts of marijuana can have on an individual's life, thereby creating greater opportunities for workforce development and stabilizing families here in our community. I also want to give a warm welcome to our fellow council member, Council Member Emmanuel Remi. Thank you for being here. Do you have any comments you'd like to share? We'll move on with our agenda for this evening. I'd like to introduce John Oswald. He has worked tirelessly conducting a lot of research in this arena, and so we appreciate all of his hard work thus far. John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Faever, and members of council. Tonight, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the proposed changes to the city codes that will liberalize marijuana possession laws in Columbus. Sorry, am I in a technical difficulty? Oh, there we go. So for an overview, I'll quickly refer back to the effects on Columbus. Ohio municipalities that have already initiated or ordained language in their city codes to liberalize marijuana possession, go through the current state of Ohio penalties, and introduce our proposal. So the effects in Columbus, and I touched upon this on our first hearing on the subject, the disproportionate effects of marijuana laws are clear both here and around the country. Since 2016, Columbus Division of Police brought over 1,400 marijuana and marijuana paraphernalia possession cases to the Franklin County Municipal Court following national trends. Disproportionate number of the individuals charged are people of color. Individuals charged are also overwhelmingly male and younger than the average population. Here's a breakdown of the marijuana and paraphernalia charges over the past three years by demographics. As you can see, 62% classified by municipal court as black male, nearly 70% total African American. These effects are seen even more acutely in other large cities around the country, with African Americans being four times more likely than whites to be charged with marijuana This started a trend in liberalization of marijuana laws in Ohio municipalities. Toledo was first. This is just a bit of a snapshot here, and I don't believe Toledo was up there, but these since 2015 have all either initiated ordinances or passed council ordinances to liberalize their laws. Most recently, Cincinnati Council, city council just approved an ordinance last month reducing penalties for possession. Currently in the state code, right now, it is a misdemeanor charge to possess less than 200 grams. Less than 100 grams is a minor misdemeanor punishable by a fine up to $150 with no jail time. 100 to just under 200 grams, a fourth-degree misdemeanor with a fine up to $250 and 30 days incarceration. Also, you can see at the bottom, the possession of paraphernalia is similar to less than 100 grams of marijuana by possession, minor misdemeanor. Our proposed code amendment is Ordinance 2032/2019, copies of which are available inside the doors of chambers on the table over there. It's an amendment to the Columbus City Codes introducing new sections 232915 and 232916 pertaining to the possession of marijuana and the possession of marijuana paraphernalia. And just to dig a little more here, the code amendment would have three central components, introducing misdemeanor possession of marijuana and paraphernalia as a criminal offense in the city codes. Currently, the only mentions of marijuana in the city code now are in relation to OVIs as well as zoning for the medical marijuana at the state level. The next would be to establish the following penalties for possession of less than 100 grams of marijuana, and also for paraphernalia would be a minor misdemeanor with a fine of no more than $10. The second section would be for misdemeanor possession of 100 grams or over and under 200 would be a minor misdemeanor with a fine not exceeding $25. And the third component would be mirroring state language for minor misdemeanors stating that offenders do not have to report a violation of these offenses as a criminal record in response to inquiries from potential employers and professional licensing boards. And with that, I would like to mention that we had been continuing to collect feedback from residents and stakeholders since the first hearing in terms of marijuana and possession penalties, and we welcome the feedback from the speakers here today. So that's the proposal. I'd like to thank City Attorney Zach Klein and his office, especially Solicitor Baker Marsh for all of her help with this, also Mayor Ginther's office, Columbus Public Safety and the Division of Police, and all the stakeholders in the process, and Council President Chair Faever. Councilmember Remi, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald, and thank you for all the time spent on research preparing that information for all of us. One question that has come up over the last three weeks or so since Cincinnati's passed their fine reduction, they took their fines down to zero. What is the average in terms of cities that have liberalized their fines? Is there an average fine that folks have taken it down to? And then I think I'm going to look over to the city attorney's office to talk through how we got to our $10.
Sure. For the initiated ordinances in Ohio, a lot of them went to a no-fine-no-jail structure that was first done in Toledo, and they had also done a few other things that they ended up being sued by the attorney general for. For example, attempting to lower felonies into misdemeanors, and they set pretty clear parameters on what cities could do. Similar ordinances around Ohio did the same. In peer cities around the country, where the penalties were a lot higher at the state level for possession, typically lowered the penalties down to $25 was roughly the average, but it ranged from 10 to 50. So that's basically where we modeled the fine structure off of. And also, if Solicitor Baker Marsh would want to comment on the no-fine portion of this, in our discussions with them, they had determined that it would not create an enforceable penalty or law from that matter, but I would defer.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. I think it's the new speaker. Yes, John, Mr. Oswald is correct. We provided legal advice regarding what we felt the acceptable parameters would be, given what council's policy decision was. We did specifically advise that we believed that the council would be consistent with its exercise of home rule authority if it were to enact a fine that was anywhere from $1 up until $150. That would be the range that would be permissible. Given, however, what council was wishing to do, of course, it was going to be a lower amount of the fine. In terms of the advice that we gave regarding a $0 penalty, which I understand a number of other municipalities have gone with, in conducting our legal research, we did believe that that would not constitute a penalty, that that would be a crime without a penalty and therefore would not be a crime at all. That is based upon a variety of decisions from the Ohio Supreme Court going back for many, many years, but also the very well-reasoned decision coming out of Toledo, and the judge that had an opportunity to also look at that same issue. I look at the question this way: If a penalty of $0 fine constitutes a penalty, then couldn't the council just easily impose zero jail days? Well, the answer is no, because in fact, either way, it's not a penalty. The council has a lot of flexibility in terms of what it wants that penalty to be, should it be a fine, should it be community service, should it be possible jail days? But what's clear is that the legislative body must impose, in order to create a criminal violation, some penalty. A court can certainly waive that. A court can decide whether or not to impose the maximum amount or the minimum amount, and a lot of case law that has been brought to my attention is an exercise of judicial discretion, and they certainly have that authority. But in terms of whether or not a legislative body can enact a crime without a penalty, it has been the legal advice of the city attorney's office is that that would not constitute a criminal offense.
Solicitor, could you also speak to our inability to address court costs that will automatically be associated with this or any potential citation that could be issued?
Certainly. Court costs are not established by the criminal ordinances that are violated. They're established by Ohio Revised Code. They are specific to the municipal courts that then go ahead and enforce those particular violations. There's a particular obligation within the Ohio Revised Code for a judge to impose court costs. Once again, they can be waived if there's an affidavit of indignity or for other good cause shown. However, a city council doesn't have the authority to prohibit a municipal court from imposing a court cost.
Thank you. Any further questions, President Harden, Councilmember Remi? Okay. Thank you, John. Next, we'll move on to Patrick Higgins, who is with Legal Aid Society. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Chair Harden, President Harden, Chair Faever, and Councilmember Remi. I thank you for the additional opportunity to come back to speak with you about collateral consequences to criminal convictions or criminal records generally, what they mean to our clients at the Legal Aid Society of Columbus, and how grateful we are that your support will impact our ability to serve low-income Columbus residents with criminal records. You know, I think at its very core, overcoming criminal record collateral sanctions is building a pathway out of poverty, which I know is a priority of you all. This is something that collateral sanctions, I won't be too redundant tonight to my last testimony, but collateral sanctions hold people back from a job period, from better-paying jobs, from moving up within the workplace. It can also hold a person back from securing stable housing, safe housing, staying in their housing unit, all things that are critical to keeping families out of poverty or helping them to move out of it. So that's why I'm here tonight. My name is Patrick Higgins. I'm a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Columbus. We are a nonprofit law firm that was created by the Columbus Bar Association in 1953 to provide legal aid in civil matters that ensures access to justice for economically disadvantaged people in central Ohio through advocacy, education, and empowerment. Those are all things that we hope to accomplish every day in our work, but also as we expand our work, hopefully with your support. Our vision is a just and fair society where we all have the opportunity to thrive and have lives free of poverty. So like I mentioned before, I'm not going to reiterate everything that I said before, but I need to point out that collateral sanctions, as has been a kind of resounding theme, are both a race issue and a poverty issue. The folks that have criminal records are predominantly black men. The folks who have criminal records are predominantly poor, and it's our mission to really change that. So the need for criminal record-related service in Columbus, legal service specifically, has not yet been fully satisfied, and individuals with criminal records suffer the loss of jobs and housing opportunities because of it. The attorney work put into our reentry work at the Legal Aid Society of Columbus is about the equivalent of one staff attorney. There's two of us attorneys on the team. We split up the work. Even with that small amount of people, we served over 450 people in criminal record-related cases last year in the Columbusarium. So we do that through clean slate clinics. We do that through full representation in record sealing cases and other mechanisms for overcoming collateral consequences. We also do it through that empowerment and advocacy piece. We do community education. We get into prisons. We get into jails. We let folks know what their options are and make sure we're preparing them to overcome those collateral sanctions that I mentioned. So those 450 people, going back to collateral sanctions, there are hundreds of collateral sanctions in the Ohio Revised Code that say if you have this offense, you can't do this. Even beyond those legal collateral sanctions, there's even more that come along with the stigma, that come along with the employer that does a background search, and maybe either does or does not look far enough to see if a person was convicted of a crime or if the crime or the allegations were dismissed. Landlords do the same thing. All of these are collateral consequences that can impact a person's ability to really live their life or to move out of poverty. So my first plug of two, hopefully, for our clean slate clinics that happen on the third Wednesday of every month at our office on City Park Avenue. We do that third Wednesday, so if you're doing the math in your head, one happened last night. We had, it's at those clinics that we really leverage the help of volunteer attorneys and volunteer non-attorneys. Last night, we got through over 20 cases. The majority of those were people that left with paperwork in hand to go to court, that could go as soon as today, file that application to have their records sealed. Others were folks that got started on an application for a certificate of qualification for employment, which is another mechanism for overcoming the barriers created by collateral consequences to criminal records. The output of the clinic last night was the equivalent of over 26 and 1/2 attorney hours. There's a lot of folks that think about, you know, if you think about an attorney's billable rate, that's a lot of hours. We were leveraging all of that through volunteer attorneys from a local law firm. They also brought along with them law clerks for the summer. We leveraged the help of law student volunteers as well and non-law student volunteers that contributed an additional 27 and 1/2 volunteer hours last night alone. This is in addition to the staff hours that we put into our clinics, which include preparing pre-registered clients, paperwork, scheduling volunteers, developing templates so that people can go to court with the paperwork they need to start their sealing application. We do online trainings. We mentor new volunteers. And most of all, and this is something that we're hoping to expand, is tracking the outcomes of these cases. As I mentioned before, there's just two of us giving part of our time to this work. We simply don't have enough time to keep up with every single person that leaves our clinic with their paperwork in hand to file in court. With added capacity, we can follow those people along, whether it's with full representation, taking the cases in-house. We also have the ability and mechanism to track those cases, follow up with them, keep track of where they're going, so we can keep track of trends that are happening in the courts. You know, we want to be able to notice issues that are happening at the systemic level so that we can address them, whether it's through litigation, whether it's through advocacy, or just continued empowerment work with the folks that need our services. So all this is to say, keeping in mind that we're just one person, two people divided, we want to make sure that we are in efficient use of resources, and we aim to continue to do that. We are going to continue to do so to interview clients, keeping up with court dockets, and continuing to work with clients on a daily basis. So increasing our capacity for reentry work will meaningfully increase the quantity of cases that we work on, as well as the services that we provide. You know, the unfortunate reality of, you know, the world that we live in is our resources are limited. There are folks that we have to turn away because we simply don't have enough resources. The need is out there, both for legal aid generally and for this exact work in overcoming collateral consequences. We pride ourselves on the ability to provide free, high-quality legal assistance in civil legal matters, and, you know, that lack of resources can keep us from doing that for everyone that comes through our door. This isn't a guarantee that we can do it for everyone that comes through the door, but through our clean slate clinic and the leveraging of the other resources that we have at our disposal, volunteers especially, we're able to meet a huge amount of need here. We'll also be leveraging the help of community partners. Franklin County has a great self-help resource center on the sixth floor of Municipal Court. There, a person can find documents, things that they can use to proceed pro se in record sealing cases as well as other cases. We do work with them, and we're, you know, looking forward to continuing to develop that and leverage all the resources at our disposal. So, you know, we want to make sure that we work to give our neighbors with criminal records a better shot at the employment and housing opportunities that await them. Many don't get to realize those benefits simply because of a criminal record. The benefits of some of the mechanisms I described, especially criminal record sealing, without straying into the world of giving legal advice, Ohio law recognizes a sealed record as having not existed. A person can continue their life as though that conviction did not take place. That's huge in many, you know, not only from an employment and housing perspective. There are folks that come to us simply for pride reasons. Having that record removed out of public sight is remarkably empowering experience as well. So, you know, to get to our goal of helping folks to get to safe, stable lives free from poverty, we think through our clean slate clinics, our direct legal advocacy at the Legal Aid Society of Columbus, and our community involvement through empowerment and education that we can accomplish that goal. And so just one last reminder that our clean slate clinics happen on the third Wednesday of every month from 5:00 to 7:00 at our office. We're happy to share flyers, whatever we can, to make sure that word gets out there. If Councilmember Doran's were here, he is one of our former volunteers, continues to volunteer at Legal Aid Society. We appreciate all the help that we get from the legal community and folks that aren't lawyers as well. So I thank you again for your time and support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So last night, you were able to process or provide assistance to 20 individuals, and that was simply paperwork, and that included 26 and 1/2 attorney hours and 27 and 1/2 law clerk hours.
That's correct. That process, if I might expand, is, you know, the first step of that, one is getting, you know, we get folks' information, make sure they're eligible for our services. Beyond that, we run a background check. The eligibility for criminal record sealing is based on the number of offenses that a person has, and so we want to make sure we have a good understanding of that. We rely very heavily on the non-attorney volunteers to do that work, and we get a full record summary so that we can put together the application. That requires searching through court dockets. Even where we have very conveniently, you know, available information, misdemeanors are going to be in municipal court, felonies are going to be in common pleas. There's varying levels of, you know, difficulty in getting access to those different records. So yes, put in that phase with that information, an attorney can then prepare the paperwork, counsel the person about what the process is going to be like, their eligibility, and what to expect from a hearing in the event that they're going to be going pro se, which means without an attorney through the application process.
So that's truly a reflection of how complicated this record sealing process could be for an individual who may not be a practicing attorney or have any type of legal background?
Certainly, yes. The record sealing eligibility, while it recently expanded in Ohio law to include more offenses, there are lots of little intricacies that, you know, without an attorney's help, those little intricacies can make or break the difference between a person's application being accepted, how it's considered, and whether or not they successfully seal their records. In an ideal world, the courts would be navigable without the help of an attorney. I don't want to put myself out of work, but, you know, that's something that it's simply not a process that's easy to go about on your own, and that's why we're there to help with it.
Thank you. President Harden?
Thank you, Chair. Just trying to understand, with increased funding from city council, what would that get us? You talked about 400 folks served. Was that through the clean slate clinics?
That's partially yes. That's including cases that we take in-house through clean slate clinics. So those are, we touch on them in various ways. The, yeah, essentially...
Do we have some type of a, is there a way to kind of think through what our funding would do in terms of increasing capacity? I guess...
Yes, there is. So we, you know, we can track it based on, you know, what it takes to fund an attorney along with supportive staff, and, you know, at the end of the day, there's what we get in salary, but then there's all this supportive overhead that goes along with hiring a full-time staff attorney. So I think even, you know, whatever amount that is, I mean, with one person technically working on this right now, any contribution or investment in that would drastically improve it, and I'm happy to flesh out those numbers and work on that as well.
Of course. And you spoke of record sealing, and then you spoke of CQEs?
Correct.
Could you talk about the difference between the two?
Sure. So record sealing is what we like to call, you know, the equivalent of putting a record, if it were in paper form, into a locked filing cabinet. It goes out of public view where only certain people have the key. That's going to be prosecutors, police, government officials, licensing boards, things like that. That's the most common mechanism available to folks in Ohio as far as making records invisible to the public. The Certificate of Qualification for Employment was created kind of acknowledging the fact that there are so many collateral consequences to criminal records, specifically in those areas where the law says, if you have this offense, you can't do this job, you can't work in this location, you can't do X, Y, or Z. What the CQE does is if a person successfully petitions for one, it's signed off on by a court of common pleas judge, it removes those mandatory barriers that say, if you have this offense, you can't do this. So the CQE doesn't make the record go away. It stays visible. It doesn't guarantee a job or a license, but what it does do is provide individualized consideration of a person for a job or licensure where they previously would have been barred by law.
All right. Councilmember Remi? Chair Faever? All right. Well, thank you so much, Patrick.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
At this point, we're going to move forward with public comment portion of the hearing, and so we'll jump right in. Right now, we have 17 speakers signed up to speak. Right now, we have 17 speakers sign up to speak. Just a reminder to all the speakers, you have up to three minutes to speak. If you would state your name, your address, and any organization that you may represent. The first speaker to come before council is Ms. Kelly Hikes. Kelly, welcome to council. Welcome back to council.
Kelly Hikes, 2661 Willow Glen Road, and I am representing Weed Maps, a technology company that services the cannabis industry. Council President Harden, Chairperson Faver, Councilmember Remy, it is my honor to be here tonight to support legislation that begins to address the unfair and disproportionate enforcement of prohibition on cannabis within the city of Columbus. As you may know, for 10 years, I served the city first as a staffer here at council, and then as the Director of Public Health Policy, where we were able to help shape policy conversations around social justice, health, and safety. For the past two years, I've worked in government relations for this cannabis technology company called Weed Maps, with the charge to support local, state, and federal governments with responsible, well-regulated cannabis reform. Generally, Weed Maps does not get involved in decriminalization efforts. Even after legislation is passed, cannabis is still illegal. It can cause confusion among residents that continue to be cited for possession and to be fined. And as Mr. Oswald mentioned, there's kind of been, the latest wave of decriminalization has come with low fines, low to no fines, and however, prohibition started in 1906. The first wave of decriminalization came in the 70s, the second wave came in the 90s, and whether by design or by accident, it really targeted and helped young white men with high fines that they were able to pay, and people of color were not able to meet those fines, and those fines were compounded, and people ended up in jail. So, those first two waves of decriminalization didn't actually help the people that they are, that they are now intended to help. So, we're excited because this legislation has low fines, very low risk of compounding fines, very low risk of people not being able to pay their fine, and virtually no risk of people ending up in jail for low-level marijuana possession. So, we are very supportive. You guys have also done a very good job of being very clear and having communication with the public to let them know that cannabis possession will still be illegal. There will not be the confusion here in Columbus that there have been in many other jurisdictions, and for that, I thank you. We very much support you in this thoughtful and social justice-centered approach to cannabis reform. Unfortunately, there is no mechanism to legally grow, sell, or buy, or consume cannabis for adults under the limits of decriminalization, and local governments don't really have the authority or the means to prop up a legal market on their own. So, we urge you to pass a resolution of support for comprehensive cannabis reform, and remain committed to working with the City Attorney Klein, the State of Ohio, and Legal Aid on the criminal justice reform efforts that you guys have outlined tonight. In Ohio, decriminalization and the conversation focusing on the disproportionate harm prohibition has caused to communities of color is an incredibly important tool for moving the conversation forward at the state level to legalize and regulate adult use of cannabis. I will continue to urge you to use this as a starting point, that comprehensive reform, pushing the state to expand the medical program for full access for adults, reduce access for youth, and expunge the criminal records of those that had minor possessions so that they can move forward in this industry and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hikes. Any questions for...
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker to come before council is Bishop Donald J. Washington. Bishop Washington, welcome back to council.
President Harden, certainly Councilmember Faver and Remy, we're certainly thankful for being here, Mr. President. On behalf of Unity Partnership, my name is Pastor Donald J. Washington, pastor of Mount Huron Baptist Church, and president of Unity Partnership. First of all, let me just thank you and let you know that Unity Partnership is a combination of different denominations that we meet every Thursday, first Thursday of every month. And this initiative came before us, and we talked about it at length. Of course, we want to deal with the decriminalization of marijuana. That does not mean that we are endorsing it, but our churches are normally affected by the results of young men, usually between the ages of 25 and down, that there are arrests, and they have to deal with the stigma of being arrested, and it goes along with their record for so long. So, we see the effects that it has on the community, on their employment, and their families to get a job. So, we want to thank all of you, particularly Zach Klein, and certainly our mayor, and certainly this awesome city council for really taking this head on. We appreciatively applaud all the efforts that you have done to make this marijuana situation with respect to decriminalizing it, and that the fines will be just a small fine, hopefully that we get this through. So, I want to thank you again for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of the Ministers of Columbus, Ohio. I've been a past president of the State Ohio Baptist Journal Convention, moderator of the Eastern Union, and president of the Baptist Pastors Conference, and now the president of Unity Partnership. Thank you very much for your time and effort, and all of you look great.
Thank you, Bishop. Any questions for Bishop?
He led.
You're good.
I'll take questions now, I'd like, I'm a preacher, so...
You're good. Thank you so much, Bishop. The next speaker to come before council is Mr. Christopher Weish. Mr. Weish, welcome back to council.
Council President Harden, Chairperson Faver, Councilmember Remy. I can get my notes together. As a resident, I'm excited and grateful for the time to briefly address you today in support of marijuana reform legislation. I applaud the council's efforts to correct some of the inequalities embedded in our criminal justice system. For too long, criminal penalties have disproportionately affected communities of color. The unequal enforcement ignores the universality of drug dependency, as well as the universal appeal of drugs themselves, which brings me to where we are today in this nation. Many states have already begun to legalize recreational and medical marijuana, including Ohio. It is critical that we not lose sight of the people who were or could be severely affected, severely punished for something that is quickly becoming a legal form of commerce. The science and business of marijuana could soon be the focus of many college courses, or the business idea that kickstarts someone's entrepreneurial spirit, or the small business that brings new success to many of our neighborhoods. I again applaud the progressive and innovative efforts of council. It is a necessary step in the right direction. However, continued and essential reform will need to take place at the State House if we are truly going to address and rectify the inequalities in our criminal justice system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weish. Any questions? Thank you. Next speaker to come before council is Chris Nani. Mr. Nani, welcome back to council. Or welcome to council.
My name is Chris Nani, and I live at 145 King Avenue, and today I'd like to share my thoughts on two topics. First, a little bit about me. I am a recent Ohio State University Mort's graduate, who has written in academia professionally and researched cannabis policy for the last two years. I've published a case study grading the efficacy of Los Angeles' social equity program, as well as critiqued Ohio's medical marijuana program from its inception to date. I also teach cannabis classes with an emphasis on the history of cannabis and Ohio's gradual legalization of it. My first topic I'd like to discuss is the language of 2329.15B1, specifically the word prescribe. Ohio's medical marijuana program specifically uses the term recommendation when referring to what licensed health professionals may do. The Board of Pharmacy has been very clear that they do not consider recommendations to be the same as medical prescriptions. In other words, the Board of Pharmacy considers them to be two vastly different things. This distinction could be problematic, and I urge the council to revise the language from prescribe to recommend. The second topic I'd like to speak on is the funding of the Legal Aid Society of Columbus. In particular, their clean slate clinic provides record sealing services. While expunging criminal records permanently delete any history of the offense, I heavily recommend the city adopt this approach instead. Record sealing prevents the public from viewing the offense unless a court order requires the record to be viewed. Sealing a record normally prevents employers and landlords from knowing of such offense, and allows the individual the ability to obtain meaningful employment and rent or lease from a larger selection of localities. However, sealing a record is costly and normally ranges from $1,000 to $1,500, which is a major barrier to low-income individuals. Other cities that have adopted progressive cannabis policies such as Los Angeles classify low-income individuals as below $40,000, and provide free expungement clinics, or alternatively, they've enacted legislation to automatically expunge low-level cannabis offenses. Why does this matter? It gives individuals a second chance to succeed, a chance to work at a decent-paying job so they can provide for their families, or a chance to move to a better community where they don't have to worry about crime. Most employers automatically throw out applications with criminal records, and only very few businesses support second-chance opportunities like hot chicken takeover. Councilmembers, I support decriminalization, as well as additional funding for the Legal Aid Society, because it will not only provide services to those harmed by the war on drugs, but will be the first step in reversing decades of systemic drug laws that have disproportionately affected communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harden. In your example, I believe you cited LA where they have a free expungement program?
Yes.
How was that?
So, it's similar to the one in Columbus. It's monthly, and what they do is they also have attorneys come in pro bono, and they kind of line up the block. There's multiple outlets for it throughout the city, and once a week, it's, or once a month, it's all day, and it provides for expungements.
But the cost to actually process the paperwork, is there still a fee associated with that?
Yes, but there is funding from the city, and it covers all of it.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep.
And you stated that, you spoke of another city in California that just does the universal expungement, or reversal of expungement. Is that correct? Are we talking about San Francisco retroactive record sealing?
So, the state of California has enacted legislation to automatically expunge low-level cannabis possessions, and that goes in effect within a year.
And is that an action that only a state, the state can take versus the city?
I'm not sure, but I would be more than happy to research it for you.
Thank you. Sister Jenna?
Thank you, Council President Harden. I do believe that a city could be part of the solution in terms of doing a sealing program for certain, like they're doing in LA. In terms of auto-sealing, there are two issues there. One, you probably do need statewide legislation because these statutory sealing provisions are statewide revised code provisions, and they also deal with the authority of a judge exercising its discretion. That's a little bit more difficult than creating an ordinance that the judge is enforcing, it's directly dealing with the judge's judicial exercise of power. The second barrier in Ohio, and this is something that should be worked on, but the barrier that's out there, unlike California, Ohio is not a unified court system, and so, there's actually a mechanical problem with trying to identify those violations and then auto-seal them. It's not something that couldn't be overcome, but without a unified system and without a software program to do that that exists across courts, that's why it hasn't happened yet. There are certainly things that could be done within the city, if the council has an interest in looking through prior cases, that they could be identified, going down to some of these clinic programs that are being offered by Legal Aid to assist in that process, that could happen, but in terms of the city being able to, by ordinance, cause that to occur, likely not. The second thing I wanted to comment on, if Council President is all right with that, the comment about prescribing versus recommend, you're absolutely right. So, the language within the ordinance that was drafted and the exemption that was drafted was based upon the revised code, and we basically brought it all the way over. The General Assembly had not yet corrected it to deal with the medical marijuana provision. So, thank you for bringing our attention to that, and it's my understanding that a draft amendment to accommodate that difference is being considered.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Pastor Dale Tucker. Pastor Tucker, welcome back to council.
I want to take this opportunity to thank Council President Harden, and all city council members, and all those present on today, to share a few thoughts on the matters surrounding marijuana and criminal justice reform system. Theologian C.S. Lewis said, "You can't go back and change the beginning, but you can start where you are and change the ending." And as we consider those words, all of us at some point in our journey can recall, or we have paused, prayed, or wished that we can go back in time and be granted another chance in a moment, period, or chapter in our lives. Whether they be a missed opportunity or failed one, we all have one. Please be clear that I'm not present to debate moral judications or to justify actions that led to legal retribution, but I do stand to declare that choices don't always define an individual, and our present circumstances do not always define our future. I stand as a living witness, when given another chance, life circumstances can and will work out for your good. We're here today because just over three years, over a three-year period, almost 1,500 cases have been heard in our Franklin County Municipal Court system surrounding marijuana arrests. I'm disturbed and in awe of the cases that have been heard, but I'm also disturbed in the reality of the 1,500 cases. Almost 60% of those cases involved young black men, or men that look like me, and 40% of them are under the age of 25. And as a seasoned mother in the church would say, "Something just ain't right with that picture." And that picture portrays that most of our arrests are disproportionately served to our young black men. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Whatever affects one directly affects us all indirectly." And I can never be who I ought to be if you're not who you ought to be. So, therefore, it is my humble submission to the council that I give my support for the marijuana and criminal justice reform and its next steps. I seek your leadership to reevaluate and secure appropriate penalties surrounding the misdemeanor crimes, especially for first-time offenders, and help lead the efforts to find programs, mentorships, and pathways that can not only provide a second chance, but to make them a reality. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And I'd just like to say that as part of our support and our engagement in this action, as we work with Legal Aid, we want to make sure that we further bind the relationship between the church and Legal Aid, so that we can really make sure that we are having these sealing programs where folks are. And so, I appreciate your engagement today, but look forward to working with the entire faith community in Columbus to further build that connection.
Most certainly. We're here to support however ways we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Nolan Rushling. Rushling?
My name is Nolan Rushling, council president, you got it right. Live at 64 Freibers, Columbus, Ohio. And yeah, I'm a resident of Columbus, and I'm here in support of these measures. I moved to Columbus 10 years ago to attend college at Ohio State, and I've stuck around ever since, working in my field and enjoying this fine city. I've come to love it, the sense of community, the culture, and the excitement of living in a rapidly growing and expanding city. In Columbus, I see a community, a community where I can grow my career, where I can enjoy life as a young person, and maybe one day establish a family. You know, I often hear Columbus described as an opportunity city, and for me, that has been the case, but I do have to recognize that for many citizens, there's much less opportunity than for folks like me, a white, college-educated... for folks like me, a white, college-educated, middle-class man. There are numerous barriers to achieving upward mobility in Columbus, and I believe it's the job of our city government and our elected officials to remove those barriers, to alleviate that struggle. This measure to reduce the penalty of possession of marijuana would do that in part. I also appreciate the efforts to increase funds for attorneys to seal records for minor convictions. The fact that the ordinance would mean offenders don't have to report to potential employers' violations as part of a criminal record means there's one less bump in the road for folks who don't have to be punished for making one decision. I support this measure, and I applaud you all for working to address the racial and economic disparities in this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nolan. Next speaker to come before council is Commissioner Annie Womack. Commissioner, welcome back to council.
Can I get everybody's extra time added to my time? Chair, President, Council Member. So, I'm going to dare to say that we can go back because we're here to talk about penalties and fines and the legal system. Let's talk about the policing and the arrests. Because if not so many people were arrested, we wouldn't need more funding for Legal Aid. We wouldn't need to be staggering our criminal justice system. And we all know that this 190-page report produced by the American Civil Rights Defenders Union already tells us that this is a black-and-white issue. We know that black people are proportionately arrested more than their white counterparts. We know that in a narrow point of time, between 2001 and 2010, eight million arrests happened. And out of those eight million arrests, 88% of those were for possession. And out of those arrests in the state of Ohio, in the state of Ohio, white people were arrested 125 per 100,000. African-Americans, 573 times per 100,000. Ohio was ranked 11 for the most possessions in one year alone. So, it's not about fines, it's not about working through the judicial system. What it's about is the policing. And our neighborhoods on the Near East Side are policed, and other neighborhoods are protected, meaning that if I live on the Near East Side, proud resident of the Near East Side, a member of the Columbus Chapter of the NAACP Branch 3177, but I'm also a proud mother of three African-American children. And unfortunately, we have to have the talk. And I'm not talking about the birds and the bees, but the talk. What happens when you walk out with your friends in a group, and somebody's doing something and all of you are hell? What happens when you are pulled over? What happens when you're pulled over if your taillight is out, and then they search and seize your car? What happens? Let's talk about the policing. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. And let's talk about the billions of people, the thousands of people that are arrested and then thrown into a system that they cannot get out. Let's talk about expunging records. Let's talk about certificates. But let's talk about, and we always talk about, we know that it's disproportionate to African-American men between the ages of 20 and 24. Let's talk about single-parent women. Let's talk about the single-parent nurse who was arrested here in the state of Ohio at 46, and was well on her way to a nursing career, and had a $2,500 bond that she couldn't pay, so her family had to pawn every electronic in the house to get her out of jail. And once she got out, she couldn't pay the fines, and then she was, then the court issued, the judge issued a warrant for her arrest. Let's talk about her career is over. Let's talk about any services that she applied are gone. Let's talk about the fact that this was an African-American woman. Let's talk about the fact that we know, and this report does not have to tell us, that we are incarcerated way more than people that don't look like us. And this report also says that African-Americans and white people use marijuana at the same rate, so why are we incarcerated more? I'll take questions if you have any.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have a question. I would just say that, you know, I think that's the reason why, in conjunction with Chair Favor, one, we created the Criminal Justice Committee, because this is not about one ordinance, or one resolution, or one solution around marijuana. Marijuana is just a piece of the pie in terms of criminal justice reform. And so, we look forward, council looks forward, me as a council president, look forward to working with my chair, with the other council members, and our city attorney and other folks, as we lean into those, and the mayor, as we lean into those other weighty issues in criminal justice. Chair, you have any comments?
I echo the comments. I mean, honestly, this is exactly why we are here. And we understand that it's a conversation that might cause a little bit of controversy or may make people feel a little uncomfortable, but that is our job as legislatures, to put those conversations before the residents of Columbus and engage the public. And so, we appreciate everyone for being here truly to dialogue with us. And we appreciate strong advocates like you all across the city that commit countless hours to ensuring that our youth are protected out there. So, thank you.
And if I didn't say it, I am for any measure that you do take to help on the other side. But let's talk about the beginning, what gets them into the process at the beginning.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next speaker to come before council is Dr. Brian Pace.
Mr. Pace, welcome to council. Thank you, council members, for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I received my doctorate recently from the Ohio State University, the Department of Horticulture and Crop Science, where I had the opportunity to teach a class on cannabis. I'm currently the faculty rep for the Cannabis Club at Ohio State for students who would like to get a job in the cannabis industry in Ohio or in the rest of the nation. I also teach at the Cannabis School of Cleveland here in Columbus, recently opened. So, while I support entrepreneurship and innovation in the cannabis industry, the fact that there are over, an average of about 20,000 people arrested for cannabis in the state of Ohio annually doesn't sit well with me. So, I do support people having an industry and making money, but the people in cages is what bothers me. To be clear, I support the decriminalization of all drugs. So, thank you for having this conversation and taking the time to think about all of the administrative challenges, but I'm a scientist, and so I wanted to talk briefly about the science. Our class at Ohio State was a graduate-level class. We use peer review studies to look at the evolutionary history, the agronomy, the chemistry, the medical applications, the industrial applications of cannabis. And I want to state a few simple facts. One, there have been zero deaths reported from the use of cannabis by anyone ever. In a department, because I know that cities have to think about how things work, in a Department of Transportation study in 2015, they found that there was no difference in likelihood for car crashes as a result of people being under the influence of cannabis despite the lowered reaction rates. So, we know cannabis is medically powerful, and that's why it was passed in the state legislature to help people who are suffering. I hope more cases are covered. I hope we continue moving towards decriminalization of substances that are medically useful. But the majority of arrests in Ohio that are drug-related, they outweigh the number of violent crime arrests combined. And so, I'm here to speak on behalf of that and to commend you and everyone here, speaking on behalf of decriminalization. As an allocation of city resources, this should be an emergency and treated as an emergency. The Dispatch reported that in 2017, there were 80 murders. At the time of writing, there were 22 arrests. When questioned, the police said that they were unable to close these murders because they lacked the resources. Perhaps if we reallocated those resources, we could ensure better public safety. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Dr. Pace? Thank you, sir. Next person to come before council is Chad Thompson.
Thank you very much, President Harden, Chair Favor, Councilmember Remy. My name is Chad Thompson. I'm the executive director of the Sensible Movement Coalition. We are the organization that's responsible for the initial ordinance drafting and passing in Toledo, and subsequently, the other cities in Ohio that currently have an effect, a sensible marijuana ordinance. And I want to thank you very much for your action as a council and your attention into this issue of cannabis policy reform. I'm here today to speak very definitively on the importance of passing a no-fine, no-time ordinance, and I want to address the legality of that first, and then I want to address why it's important. There are many cities in this country that have passed a low-fine ordinance with horrible results. So, this is very important. If you want to stop the racial disparity, if that's your issue, by lowering the fine to $10, it will not stop the charges, and it will not stop the racial disparity. There's only one way to stop the racial disparity, and it stops instantly, and that's to put forth a no-fine, no-jail time, no-court-cost ordinance. Now, I want to address the legality. I'm very intimately involved in law involving this specifically, the case in Toledo that was referenced, the 2015 case. I was involved in that case, and I'm very intimately familiar. So, it is a distinction that I think is being overlooked here. So, a fine is in fact looked upon as a collateral consequence. The penalty is in fact the minor misdemeanor charge itself. So, it is a fact that the Ohio Supreme Court has said several times, in about four cases that I can find, and that were referenced in the 2015 case, let me read. "A statute is not a criminal statute unless a penalty is provided for its violation." Now, that is a standalone sentence out of context, seems very clear. What essentially, in context, what they were comparing is a set of civil statutes that carry no charge, no misdemeanor, and no felony offense at all. The sensible marijuana ordinance, as written in the other 12 cities that offer no-fine, no-time, but still offer a charge of a minor misdemeanor, in fact crosses the threshold of legality. And here's the reason why it's important. I don't have a lot of time, I apologize. In Pittsburgh, they passed a decriminalization ordinance, very low-fine, and what happened is charges went up. The racial disparity in fact went up. In Grand Rapids, Michigan, there was a decriminalization ordinance down to $25. Over $100,000 of tickets went unpaid the next year. And in Ohio, if you do not pay a minor misdemeanor ticket, you can get a warrant for your arrest. This is a big deal, and this is huge. If you want to stop the racial disparity and solve the problem, it must be no-fine, no-time. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. You brought a lot of information. Sister General, is there a clear difference between the penalty being, or the penalty itself being the legality piece, as Mr. Thompson said, versus the fine?
So, thank you, Council President Harden. I believe Mr. Thompson said that the fine is a collateral consequence and that the penalty is the crime itself. Is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
The charge is the penalty.
The charge, the charge, the penalty itself. There is very specific case law out there talking about collateral consequences as being consequences that are beyond the imposition of a fine, or costs, or jail time, but go to actions that occur as a result of having been convicted. So, collateral consequences would be, for instance, as Legal Aid was discussing, not being able to get a license or not being able to get a job. That's a collateral consequence. It is by definition something that happens outside of the offense itself and outside of the court proceedings. It's something that is caused by having been convicted, but is not part of the conviction itself. That's a collateral consequence. So, a fine is in fact part of being convicted. It is a necessary aspect of a criminal offense. You have to have an offense, and you have to have a sentence in order to be convicted of a crime. So, for instance, as prosecutors deal with all the time, if somebody's entered a guilty plea, the charge has been brought before them, they've entered a plea of guilty, but they're not considered convicted of that crime until they have been sentenced. It's two parts in order to have a criminal conviction. So, in this case, a lot of the cases that we were discussing or that were raised dealt with a judge's discretionary act in making a decision to impose a particular kind of penalty. Am I going to impose a fine? Am I going to impose jail days? And certainly, a court has the authority to say, you know, the interests of justice are, I'm not going to do any of those things. And that person is still convicted of a crime so long as the judge passes sentence, finds them guilty, and says, "I'm deciding as your penalty that I'm not going to impose a fine here." That would be permissible. However, what we're talking about here is not a judicial act of discretion. What I'm talking about here is the construction of an ordinance by a legislative body. And the case law that was cited to by the judge in Toledo, and that's been referenced here, discusses what's necessary in order for a crime to have been created by legislative action, legislative action, sorry. And those cases, while not directly on point, because I'll be honest, and I've been honest with council, this specific issue, other than the case in Toledo, has not been addressed. But the analysis that the Toledo judge went through is an analysis that I tend to agree with, because merely being charged with a crime is not a penalty. And it must carry some sort of penalty, be it a jail sentence, be it a fine, be it community service, there's a lot of different things that could constitute a penalty. And the Ohio Revised Code specifically lays out what things constitute a penalty. And in order to have that, it has to be stated in the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any further questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you, and thank you for the feedback. I know that you'd reached out to our offices this week with some additional information that has been helpful.
Absolutely. I just would like to point out, there are 12 cities currently enacted that are valid and enforceable right now. Attorney General's not challenged any of those.
In terms of whether or not they're valid and enforceable, they may be on the books, but they have not been legally challenged. And until they are, they can't be determined to have been valid.
Ohio Revised Code says that if it hasn't been challenged, it's legal. The only way to stop it is to be challenged.
Thank you, sir. Just want to make sure everybody's had the same time. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker to come before council is Alaha Mualimu. Welcome back to council.
Oh, Halah Mualimu, 1891, Ferntree Road, Council President Harden, Chair Favor, Councilmember Remy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for addressing this issue as was discussed earlier. I see that it's obviously very important for folk personally here, but also in terms of governance for our city and moving us forward. I come to you in much the same way this meeting opened this evening, and that was, and that is rather, as an educator. You mentioned having conversation with students on the north side of Columbus. I have 16 years of service in education, and formerly served as Associate Minister at Lincoln Park Community Baptist Church. And in those experiences, I have seen the spiraling and life-inhibiting impacts of marijuana legislation. I'm going to talk about three things in terms of what I've observed for young folk over the years who've been impacted by this legislation. One is the internalization that often happens when young folk are found in possession and face a charge or conviction. I've seen, as is the topic for much folk today, black boy joy. Folk with very promising futures absolutely obliterated by folks being found in possession of marijuana and going through the legal system. I've seen folks change their entire demeanor in my classroom. I've seen folks who used to sit in the front of the class now go to the back of the room. I've seen people shut down and completely forget about who they were as a result of entering into the legal system. The dropout rate that occurs for our young folk who are caught in possession of marijuana is much higher than those that haven't. They miss school, and oftentimes, again, they internalize a lot of the things that happen as a result of them being in the court system. And for many of them, feel like there's no point in continuing school. So, I've again seen folk go from being in the front of the class, in the back of the class, and participating, and then dropping out as a result of their convictions. And the last part is criminality. Marijuana is often discussed in terms of a gateway drug, but in fact, I think a lot of these issues, as they happen with minors, it's really a gateway conviction, and that's part of that internalization process, that if I'm already been introduced to the criminal justice system, then I might as well keep going, that this is kind of who I am, it's an identity, unfortunately, that folk buy into. I'm clearly at this state, obviously very much in support of the proposed legislation. At this point, though, my question centers around what happens to our young folk who are minors who are caught in possession? What type of resources might... What type of resources might there be for folk and their families to help navigate in addition to what's already being proposed if they're caught in possession?
And are you yielding back your time?
I yield my time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. I think that it was, the question, it was something that first got this counsel thinking about, a question from someone from Beechcroft. I think that under this legislation, they would be covered the same, and I think you're asking about additional resources above and beyond. I think it's certainly worth a conversation. For me, and I think for this counsel, one of the things that we like to go back to, and I think it's important, is that we are not encouraging or sanctioning the use of drugs. But if one were to make that decision and decide it, that there should be a way to come back from those instances before you get too far down the judicial system. And so I would love to work with you and any other partners as we can think through specific programs. I know there are a lot of community programs out there that this council supports. To be very specific, as we continue to move this criminal justice conversation forward, we'd love to have you stay at the table with us. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to come before counsel is Lavelle Salisbury. Is that correct? From the Sensible Movement Coalition? Let the record reflect that Mr. Lavelle is not in the chamber. Next person to come before counsel is Priscilla Harris.
Good evening. I'm Priscilla Harris, 3894 East Antistill. Good evening, President Harden, and Councilmember Faiver, and members. I just wanted to step up, and I know last time I had touched bases. I greatly appreciate all of your efforts in looking forward into the decisions that you guys make on the decriminalization. Why would we continue this vicious cycle? It's been shown truly effective in 12 cities, that no fine and no time is the way to end the racial disparities for the residents. It's always the low-income areas, the disadvantaged people, and I was one of them, who had my kids taken away, like I explained in the last meeting, having a fiance that had cancer, and dealing through all these processes, being financially impacted through some of the situations. So Ohio law is an ordinance if it is valid until a court rules that it is invalid. 12 cities are currently valid in the state of Ohio with the no-fine, no jail time policy. Also, the low-income areas, the collateral consequences, losing your student loans, your housing. As long as we're still putting this on the record, these are still going to be consequences as a single mother, that's going to impact the residents of Columbus, as well as citizens in Ohio in general. Every one of us in the room, from Sensible Movement Coalition, to I'm also the lobbying advisor for Normal Appalachia of Ohio, as well as a teacher for, I teach the advocacy and policy for the Cleveland School of Cannabis, as well as the Columbus School of Cannabis. So I see the way we're constantly interacting with people, and firsthand, I deal with so many people that is impacted from the racial disparities. We get phone calls all the time of, how could we handle this case? Is there anything you guys can do? And having friends and families that utilize cannabis as a source, it bothers me to think that even if we do the $10 or the $25, it's still going to have an impact, collateral consequence on everybody's life. So as you guys get to make the decision, at the end of the day, I humbly and respect your decision, but I really pray that you guys would look into the no-fine, no-time a little bit harder, and take into consideration everybody that has came out in this room today to stand up here as to really push for a no-fine, no-time policy. And I'd like to thank you guys once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Next speaker to come before counsel is Shannon Moore. Welcome back to counsel.
Hello. Glad to be back. Well, thank you, President Harden, Councilwoman Faiver, and Councilmember Remy, for this opportunity to go before you all and speak in support of your council's proposal to reduce penalties and provide second chances for marijuana possession. I believe you all know that the unfairness and message our community has communicated to our, our country has communicated to our families and our young people through our criminal justice policies have been upsetting, because of its long legacy of injustice, racial bias, and unfairness. As a native of Columbus, I graduated our school district, Ohio State, and involvement with the city for a long time, and even as a young professional, I chose to live and work here and serve the youth and families of our city. I understand and know firsthand the implications that problematic criminal justice policies have had on the most vulnerable in Columbus. When you read stats that young black men caught smoking marijuana are four times more likely to be arrested, or that more than 60% of defendants were black men, and nearly half were 25 years old or younger, is really disturbing. As we all know, those stats do not exist because they are using marijuana at higher rates than other communities, but that the data shows that it's because of the unfairness and bias that has been built into the infrastructure of our judicial system, which has cut off educational and employment opportunities, impacting not just them alone, but their families and overall well-being of our communities. When I read those stats, they are not just numbers to me. I see my former and current students, my neighbors, members of my family who reside here and have been impacted by policies such as the status quo. We have to consider what message we are communicating to our youth of color, and understand why there is a lack of trust, involvement, tension, and a lack of sense of safety amongst them. I work with young people every day, and they are fully aware of the racial bias and double standard in many of our laws and policies. And it's creating a deep divide within them that we don't value or care about them or their futures. But I believe that we are more than that, and that we can, and that we can, and we are doing a better job to support and value them, and create a more equitable community. I believe that here in Columbus, we have an opportunity right now to begin to change that narrative, and as leaders, we must, and we are, and we are creating a community that is presenting a different message to all of Columbus, especially those who have been impacted, simply because of their zip code, age, and race. I believe this legislation is another pathway to help build our communities out of poverty. And with this type of reform that you all presented to our city, we get to practically express that we want a safer and more thriving community for all of us, and not just some. I believe that this is a step in the right direction, and I am in full support, and I look forward for the opportunities this will create for our city.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Next speaker to come before counsel is Derek Holmes.
Good evening to Council President Harden, to City Council, and to all of God's children. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity just to share my convictions around this issue. As I think about the current legislation around marijuana and reforming it, I'm led to reflect on the reason behind the proposed reform itself. We're having this conversation because it is clear that what's in place is not equitable, particularly for people of color. We're engaged in conversation around equitable consequences for legal possession of cannabis, and by my thinking, that conversation really centers around three central questions. Are the policies we presently have in place the most equitable? Are we able to do better than what we have? And will we do better than what we've already done? Considering the context in which we're having the conversation, I'm completely convinced that not only that we can do better, but that we have to do better. We are in a moment where the criminalization of marijuana has led and continues to lead scores of individuals we put in jail, the majority of those are people of color, black men. The criminalization of marijuana feeds an already ravenous system of mass incarceration that profits off the imprisonment of bodies. Once jailed or imprisoned, that sister or that brother now has a stain placed on them by the system, one in which every form of social discrimination, job discrimination, wage discrimination, housing discrimination, and the like, all become legalized. Persons unable to go to work now cause unemployment to go up, which then affects the economy on a more domestic level, and by the way, the level that I'm the most concerned about. Someone can't provide for their family when they can't get a job because they have a record, because they did some time, because of a sentence, because they got arrested, because they were in possession of marijuana. Simply put, it seems to me that the current legislation around marijuana ends up costing more in the long run than what most are actually willing to pay for it. The imbalance of penalties for possession, the ripple effects that ruin lives and livelihoods, the connection to the prison-industrial complex, all directly affected by the ways in which laws are currently written around marijuana. Again, those three questions ring in my brain. Are the policies we have in place the most equitable? Are we able to do better than what we have? Will we do better than what we've already done? The current course of action we are on must not be allowed to abide any further. Ladies and gentlemen, I am of the mind that tonight, and going forward, we have an opportunity to take steps towards a better way, a way in which there is no disparity between penalties for narcotic possession, a way in which we can work and do the necessary work of ultimately deconstructing a prison system that needs to be dismantled, a way in which people are afforded the opportunity, their right by God and the Constitution, to have the same chance at happiness that someone else may get. We have a chance, starting tonight, and in the days and weeks to come, to actually change. To consider reform is not to offer an exception and a justification to someone who may have made a mistake. It's actually to offer justice to someone who is deserving of it, no matter what they've done. I am in support of marijuana reform. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor. Next speaker to come before counsel is Kevin St. Clair. We have two more speakers left, or almost there. St. Clair, welcome to counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, President Harden, Councilwoman Faiver. Appreciate you having me here. I'm here in favor of reform, but to be honest with you, I don't think you're going far enough. Any type of fine, any type of penalty really says, hey, we're still going to penalize you for being black in America. These laws were set up to penalize us, to target us. When the police come into our communities, they go to our car, I smell marijuana. They don't smell marijuana. That's a way to search us. That's the way to lock us up. And these laws are going to keep doing that if you don't stop them. These laws, it's a Schedule I drug, right? There's no medical, nothing medical, so why do we have a medical marijuana law here in Ohio? Someone's lying to us, right? Either the state of Ohio's lying to us, or our government's lying to us. Someone's lying to us. Right? But why are they lying to us? They're lying to us to target African-American and brown boys, to lock us up and stop us from progressing. Any type of fine is going to keep that in place. Any type of law is going to keep that happening. Think about that. $1, they're going to keep that happening. These laws are unjust. They should be illegal. I have an illness. I can't make it to the hospital because I can't afford it, so now I'm a criminal? You know there's a health gap disparity in our community. Our babies are dying at an alarming rate across the country. Our babies are dying worse. Our black kids are getting locked up worse. Why is that? Because we're being targeted. This law needs to stop. Zero fine. Zero time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Next speaker to come before counsel is Mr. Jeffrey Ushry. Welcome to counsel, sir.
Thank you. Jeffrey Ushry, 1027 South Ashburton Road, Chair Faivers. I am the pole mark of Columbus Alumni Chapter of Capo Fasi. And even though I'm not representing us as a group, I will represent us as a high school coach here in Columbus, Ohio, for baseball at the high school and middle school level. And I have seen the direct impact that marijuana possession has had on children that I know that I have coached. And I've seen how it has led them away from playing, how it has led them away from being in school, and how their lives have just gone off track. I also stand here as a father of a junior at Central State University and a sophomore at the Ohio State University. And even though they do not participate in the smoking of marijuana, they hang out with kids that do. So we have had the talk, and someone kind of took some of my thunder, and we've done the teen summits, and what happens when the police show up? And you're amongst a group of kids, and even though you're not participating, you get hauled off, okay? I saw, and excuse me, I don't have prepared comments, but I saw earlier this week where the City of Columbus Police came out with a pact, and I want to talk about community policing. I think this reform would go hand in hand with that, because I live in the city. I went to Eastmore, I went to Ohio State, I live on the east side, and I get that feeling of occupation, not policing. And occupation, like the previous speaker said, when you jump out of a car, it's all about, hey, get on the ground, I smell weed. Well, with a whole different mindset, and with the liberalization of some of these laws, like you're proposing, I think that would go a long way with some of the mindset in the community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ushry. Final speaker to come before this hearing this evening is Ms. Barbara Clark. Ms. Clark, welcome back to counsel.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Everybody's going to be mad at me, but I'm just, I just feel like we're pouring fuel on the fire. We have so many young people out there on marijuana, who started on marijuana, who are now on opiates. I don't see in this law, I am, I do agree with the no time, no fine, but I need, I think it needs to be more than that. I think it needs to be some treatment in there. Because the young man who talked about when they get caught for possession of marijuana, they move to the back of the class. If he did some more education, that's not the possession he got, that's the progression, progression of the drug. That's how you act. You withdraw. So people begin to get more and more, and you tell them there's no fine, there's no time, you're saying, smoke all you want, sell all you want. In our community, I don't know where y'all from, but in our community, that's what I see every day. And marijuana don't stop them from getting jobs. They don't, they're not working because there's something else going on with them, and that's why I say, if you're going to pass this, pass it with some treatment. We have an opiate crisis. They put opiates and fentanyl in marijuana. So if we pass this law, pass it with some treatment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. I'm actually going to turn it over to Chair Faiver for some closing remarks.
Well, thank you to all of our speakers that took time out of your evening to join us, to offer your comments, and whether you're in agreement or not in agreement, it's healthy to have dialogue about these issues. As Chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, I'm committed to continuing this conversation, and the work beyond what we have discussed here today. There were recommendations about how do we work with youth that might be impacted by this, and our just most recent comment about those who may be affected by the opioid crisis. So we know that this is just the beginning of a long conversation. So we know that this is just the beginning of a long conversation that we have to have. But the effectiveness of criminal justice reform lies in our willingness to fix the perceived errors and unintended consequences of our criminal justice system. Reform of any kind doesn't happen overnight, and however, it is important, and it's imperative as legislators, that we continue to use this platform, this chambers, to raise awareness of these issues and these policies that continue to have disparate enforcement, and to continue to advocate for change in this arena. And so we have an opportunity here in Columbus to be a leader in this area, and I look forward to continuing this work with all of you to create greater opportunities in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly thank you for co-convening this hearing with me. I want to thank again Councilman Remy for being here, thank Solicitor General for your advice and for your counsel, certainly to the Department of Public Safety, thank you so much for your counsel as well. At our here, at our last hearing, we heard about how the war on drugs destabilized families, particularly in communities of color. We heard about how marijuana penalties impact hundreds of residents in Columbus every year, and how our neighborhoods face barriers to employment. Tonight, we discussed a common sense proposal to lower penalties for paraphernalia and marijuana possession. We also heard about an opportunity to help folks who have been caught in the legal system get back into the workforce. I want to recognize that while this reform matters for Columbus residents, state house reforms like Senate Bill 3, that City Attorney Klein and Prosecutor O'Brien have been working on, can go further, can go much further than what the city is legally permitted to enact. I look forward to continuing to work with our colleagues at the State House alongside City Attorney to push for further criminal justice reform. While other states are legalizing marijuana, our current state house is not moving in that direction, and our residents can't wait for the right valid initiative for a shot at a better life. That's why we will bring this reform package to council floor for a vote this Monday, July 22. And while we have a long way to go to create a fair and equitable justice system, this is a good step. This concludes tonight's hearing. Thank you all for being here.